We will call the Stevens Point Area Public School District Regular School Board Meeting for Monday, October 9th, 2017 to order. And I would ask Sue to do the roll call and verification of quorum.
Ms. Baker.
Late.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Ebo?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Mr. Kontos?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Ranno?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
We have a quorum eight present, one late.
Excellent. We will move into the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, we have the pledge being led by our Plover Whiting Elementary School students. We have Natalie Hansen, Paige Moyer, Pam Dahmeris, Kayle Wurzinski, Annalise Bang, Dala Bang, and Jessica Hansen. So if you guys want to face the flag, and when you're ready, go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys want to stay right up there for a second, please? We're going to grab a picture here, and if I could have the parents wave. All the parents that are here tonight, thanks so much for bringing your kids. We appreciate having your kids involved with our school board meeting. And if I could have you shake the hands of our school board and go right around, starting with Mr. Kontos.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Like your t-shirt. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Thanks for spending your evenings with us. We appreciate it. Great. Thanks very much.
Hey, good job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Good job.
We will move into item four, which is Community Partnership and Recognition. Tonight's Student and Staff Recognition. First, we will have the Mandana Bliss Award. Will be presented by Kennedy Students, Maxwell Bienvenu, Lake Laduski, Karen Slaven, and Mitchell Janishevsky to Jeremy Jonas. And if you guys want to go over by the podium-
We also have Preston Clermont and Juan Terrez Rocha with us this evening.
And then, when you want to speak, if you could come right up here at the podium and speak, and that way, everybody will be able to hear you in the room by the microphone.
I feel that Mr. Jonas deserves the Mandana Award because he lets us go outside and do math, then he lets us play on the break down a little bit. Mr. Jonas is smart, especially when he figures out math problems. He is really funny when he tells us jokes. Before snack, he lets us run on the track. That's why I think Mr. Jonas should get the Mandana Award. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Jonas here?
Yeah.
Come on up while they're talking to you.
Definitely. Definitely.
I feel Mr. Jonas deserves the Mandana Award. He let us go outside and run for mental break and practice tug-of-war. Some of Mr. Jonas's character traits are serious, funny, and giving. One example is he would give tickets throughout the year. So at the end of the year, end of the, end of the year, he dumped all the tickets and we got, we got throughout the year and bought stuff with his own money for us. When our ticket was drawn, he would let us go pick a treat. That's why Mr. Jonas is a great candidate for the Mandana Award.
There, Mr. Jonas is the most amazing teacher in the world.
Want to say a few words? Put you on the spot a little bit?
Well, I guess all I can say is thank them for all their effort and coming up here and taking time out of their day.
That's okay.
Kind of hard for me. I appreciate it pretty much.
We pack a lot of emotion in our classrooms. It's awesome.
That's great.
And if I could have you step up here and shake the hand of our school board, please. Nice job.
Nice job.
That's the best one I've ever had.
Thank you.
Good job. Congratulations. You did a really nice job.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. You did a great job.
Congratulations.
Did a great job. Thank you so much for all you did.
Thanks for coming. That was great.
Thank you so much.
Nice job.
Good job. Congratulations.
And presenting the Mandana Bliss Award for Ben Franklin student Sidney Grakowski, recognizing Carrie Vries. Please come on up.
And if Carrie's here-
Come on up, please.
Our Ben Franklin Student Council has decided on Mrs. Vries for the Bliss Award because she is a great teacher who makes us want to learn and gives every student the knowledge we need to know to be successful. She gives us a very safe and comfortable place to learn. When students walk into Mrs. Vries's classroom, it makes us want to know more, and she gives us a new agenda and topic to learn about every day. So we're eager to know more about what we're learning.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank you all for taking the time to recognize teachers. I'm sure, as you can tell by Mr. Jonas's response to this, we don't expect to be recognized. And it means a lot when it comes from the students. I mean, it means a lot in any way, but when the students stand up and they pick you out, it means just the world. We love what we do, and I think you said it well, we're full of heart when we do our jobs and we come in every day hoping to reach the students. And when you get something like this, it really, really reaffirms the joy you have in what you do and why you're doing the job you're doing. So thank you very much for taking this time to recognize the teachers of our district this way. It means a lot to all of us.
You did a wonderful job representing the council. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you so much for all you do.
Nice job, Sidney. Congratulations.
So 4B is National School Lunch Week, and I have a proclamation that I would like to read from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Whereas, the National School Lunch Program plays an important role in helping to ensure that every child in the nation starts school ready to learn because a hungry or undernourished child is less likely to be an eager and attentive student. And whereas, the National School Lunch Program has demonstrated a national commitment to the promotion of our children's health and well-being, allowing children to concentrate on graduating with the skills and knowledge they need to be successful in the workplace or toward further studies, a primary goal of every child to graduate. And whereas, in Wisconsin, over 2,400 public and private schools serve 485,000 lunches each school day, not to mention all the breakfasts that are served during the school year, breakfast and lunch, and during the summer, and now dinner. We're offering dinner in certain locations in the district. And whereas, the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful and creative, underlined in our district. Creative. Local food service administrators, managers, and staff working in cooperation with parents, teachers, community groups, government personnel, and students. And whereas, in recognition of the contribution of the National School Lunch Program, Congress has designated the week beginning with the second Sunday in October of each year as National School Lunch Week and has requested the President to issue an annual proclamation calling for an appropriate observance. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Tony Evers, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, do hereby proclaim October 9th to the 13th, 2017, as National School Lunch Week in the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observation to all citizens. And we have Lori. You want to come up and just say a few words about our program? Come on up. Yeah, whoever you would like to come up, that would be wonderful.
It's just a special week for us, so we're very excited. And any parents or grandparents who'd like to join us for lunch, we would welcome you to come into our schools and have breakfast and/or lunch with us.
That's awesome.
Thank you. If you'll look down on my superintendent's report, I'm recognizing our school board this evening. As last week, it was the WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Board Recognition Week. I chose to recognize this evening, obviously because we're here as a collective board. This is my 20th, excuse me, my 19th year as a superintendent. I've worked as a superintendent in five school districts, and I've worked with, I think, over 70 school board members. So I've got a little bit of experience working with the school board, and I can honestly say that we've got a great school board here. We've got a group of professionals that take their job seriously and truly want to do what's best for kids. And I feel that, and I believe that. We have a lot of new members. We have a couple veteran members as well around the table, and I think we're growing together. A school board has a tremendous effect on a school district, on a community. However, that said, there's one person in the room that probably affects most, and that's me, because I develop a very unique and strong working relationship with each and every school board that I work with, and I'm pleased with the work that you do, and I'm pleased with the relationships that we're building collectively. So it's tough work. It's thankless work most of the time. I just want to say thank you, and if we could give our board a round of applause, please.
Thank you, sir. That's awesome.
Thanks, Craig. Moving back, we're now on item five, Public Comments. No one has signed up to speak this evening. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address comments to the school board? No one is indicating, so we will move on to item six, Presentations. A, Wisconsin Association of School Boards WASB Legislative Update.
Madam President, from the WASB, probably the most notable legislative achievement is the passing of the state budget, which allows us further guidance as far as what we're going to do for our budget, so we're happy to see that pass. No real surprises in there for us, and we've discussed that at length at committee. A couple of things of note that are coming up. One is a bill mandating the use of competitive bidding for school construction. That has had its hearings, and it's moving along pretty rapidly, so we're watching that. There is a piece of legislation called the Teacher Protection Act, which requires information to be relayed between the district and law enforcement, and we're watching that progress as well. We know that the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee has met. They met Friday and Saturday, I believe. So we are looking forward to seeing what they are going to put forward, and then we will take a stand on some of those resolutions that are offered from WASB. And interesting that Wisconsin's one of nine states to receive some new federal charter school grants, so we're looking to see when that information will become available to us, perhaps we will have the opportunity to apply for one of those with the Point of Discovery School again. So we're looking to see for that notice to come out.
So we did, Policy and Resolutions Committee did meet Friday and Saturday. I've been on it now for three years, and the first two years, we had anywhere between 25 and 30 resolutions in front of us. This past weekend, I got my packet, and there were only eight. And I thought, great, be shorter meetings! But they weren't. I mean, they were, we used all the time. And the one comment that I will make about it, or observation, I think because of the governor's budget, there were no, there really weren't the fiscal dollars, different districts trying to carve a bigger piece of the pie for themselves in unique and different ways. So the issues that will be coming forward to the board, they're, they're not fiscal, but they are incredibly substantive within themselves. And I think we'll be able to have a really good discussion about that. So we will be meeting again in conjunction with the Legislative Conference, that I think it's November 1st and 2nd here in town, and forwarding the actual language. And then that information will come to us, to our Policy Committee in December, the hope is, for review and recommendation to the board.
Item B is Student Representative Report.
All right. So Homecoming 2017 took place this past week in September. The week featured dress-up days, class activities, free ripper floats, and traditions like Mr. Spash, the Powderpuff Game, the parade, football game, and dance. Terrez Ludkey was the homecoming queen, and Tom Hatton was Mr. Spash. Over 1,200 students attended Saturday's dance. The PSAT for this year's juniors will be Wednesday morning at Spash. We have approximately 150 juniors signed up to take the test. Last week, 24 students attended the 2017 Nobel Conference with Mr. Ackman. Our adventure leadership classes are in the middle of their first field trips of the semester. The classes are going to be camping and climbing at Devil's Lake. The first concerts of the year will be next week. Orchestra performs on Tuesday, October 17th, at 7:30 PM, and all choirs will perform on Thursday, October 19th, also at 7:30. The concerts are held in the Spash Auditorium. Spash Fall Sports are approaching the end of their seasons. The volleyball team is having a great season and currently have a conference record of eight to two. They will begin regional play next week Thursday. The football team currently has a record of 4-4. They just beat Wisconsin Rapids last Friday night in a downpour of rain to win back the Old River Jug. They play Fond du Lac Friday night, and if they win, will be in the playoffs. Our girls' golf team will be in third place at Sectionals by two strokes. They won the conference this season and had a great year. Our boys' and girls' cross-country trains will both run in the Wisconsin Valley Conference Meet this Saturday at Standing Rocks. Both teams will also compete in the sectional meet at Nina. The boys' soccer team currently has a record of six to four in the conference and wrap up their season with a home game against DC Everest and Wausau East. Both games are at 7:00 PM in the Portage County Youth Soccer Complex. They start regional play next Thursday. The girls' swim team is undefeated. They have a couple of dual meets left versus Wausau East and Merrill before the Wisconsin Valley Conference Meet on October 26th. They have broken a lot of pool records already this year and are hoping for a strong finish. The girls' tennis team finished second in the conference and second at Sectionals. The team is sending a singles player and two doubles teams to the state tournament this Thursday and Friday in Madison. This concludes the Spash update. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Sounds like it's busy, it's fast. Moving into item C, Communication Report. Sarah O'Donnell.
Hi, thank you. So your communication dashboard is included. A few things I want to bring to your attention. I took out the website update for this particular report and put in kind of that new media report that shows the impact of efforts focused across the district. So what you see first is typically, I show you kind of how the district Facebook page is doing and kind of, you know, what that looks like and other social media accounts. But wanted to show you the efforts that are taking place across the district. It's not just the district that maintains the account, that account. There are 21 other Facebook accounts that are really focused on sharing the good news that is happening across schools and clubs and sports. So to highlight the work this month, I did include that on there. Overall, those accounts have over 7,000 followers in the community. In the month of September, they saw over 5,500 engagements on over 200 posts with 377 comments and 630 shares. So people are certainly engaging in those as well as just ours. So again, just wanted to call that out and thank the staff that are doing that good work in addition to what we're doing here at the district level. On-your-radar events include upcoming concerts. Plover Whiting Race for Education on October 18th, the Portage County E-Cycle fundraiser. If you need to clean out a garage, it is a really good time to do it. That's a great fundraiser. They make it really easy. You could literally never get out of your car, and your TV is gone. It's great. And funds go back to school, obviously. The Midnight Monster Dash will take place on October 28th. That's a midnight fun run to benefit pods. The first of three Child Development Days will take place at Kennedy Elementary on November 2nd. If you're not familiar with that, children ages 2 through 5 can attend for free hearing, vision, speech, language screenings, including fine and large motor skills, and just overall early childhood development. So if you're a parent who is interested in having that done completely free, there will be two more throughout the year. November 3rd and 4th will be the Spash Fall Play at 7:00, and then at 2:00 and 7:00. General missions at the door. It is three comedic one acts this year. Skid Marks, Wait, Wait, Bo Bait, and This Phone 2.0. I'm told they're very funny. Not included, but definitely a community event that I wanted to mention. It will be the 17th Annual Empty Bowls Event on Saturday, October 28th, from 11:00 to 2:00. That does take place at Spash. Empty Bowls, if you're not familiar, is a, raises funds in the area for hunger prevention efforts. And this year, there's something kind of fun happening. Four of our elementary principals will be involved in the soup throwdown. So if you would like to go and support or not support one of them, Ryan Arada, Principal at Washington, Carl Banker, Principal at Madison, Amanda Mayo, Principal at McKinley, and Mrs. Kepke from MacDill will all be participating in that to support the community. And finally, I just want to mention that our state report cards are typically released this time of the year. They are, that date has been pushed back from the state, and they've not provided another date that we will see those. So test score data is available. If a person wanted to go out and look at Wise Dash, you could certainly find that there. Certainly internally, we're looking at that, but we've not seen kind of those overall test scores come out yet. So with that, I also, I hemmed and hawed over whether I would say something, but I just want to say thank you. I'm going to cry. And not just to the board, but to just the entire district. We had a, he's doing great. He's through two treatments. He has two treatments left. It was just a very difficult time, and we got cards and notes from not just the people that I work with every day, but people who work here that I have never met, and support from, sorry, teachers and school communities where my kids are, Jefferson and PJ's, that we'll just never be able to thank them. So thank you very much, and it's so good to be back here.
We're happy to have you back, and we're very happy to hear that you're moving forward in a good way, so that's wonderful. Moving on to item D, the Superintendent's Report.
No crying allowed, because when somebody cries, I tend to cry. We have six National Merit semifinalists this year, which is unbelievable and awesome. I'd like to congratulate Alexandra Anderson, Tom Felk, Jocelyn He, Max Hoffmeister, Gabby Larson, Hope Mann, as well as commended student Rania Nasif for their work as it relates to the Merit Scholarship finalists, which will be coming out. John, when does that, when does that get revealed?
The application deadline is still a few weeks away, and then it'll be six to eight weeks after that.
Okay. But certainly a big deal when you have six semifinalists, so good luck to those fine students. I had already mentioned the School Board Recognition Week. If you haven't, behind us, make sure you take the opportunity to read the thank yous that were written from many staff members from all of our buildings, and thanks to all of you that took the time to recognize our school board. And the last item I have down would be Spash Homecoming, and Shay, you did a beautiful job recapping that. I would simply like to reiterate just a fine job by a lot of students and a lot of staff members to put a very, very successful week together. So thanks to all of those that were involved with the Spash Homecoming. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Craig? At least not right now. I'm sure we'll have some as we move forward. We're moving into item seven, the Consent Agenda. Tonight, that includes the minutes for the October 9th, 2017 Regular School Board Meeting. And B is Approval of the Monthly Bills. And C are our Employment Recommendations.
Move for approval as presented. Beckett?
Any discussion or questions? Mike?
You know, reading through the minutes, it seemed like there was maybe a discrepancy in one of the votes. It's one, it's the section that dealt with public comment, 167.3. There was a motion to amend the policy, striking a sentence, and I couldn't, I just couldn't get it all to add up here, as far as the yes and no votes. I'm not sure what's correct, but-
Do you want me to pull that and check it, and you can put them back again for September for the next month?
Okay. All right, do you have a motion to-
I'll amend my motion to pull the minutes and approve the other items. Barb, did you change your second with that?
My second has changed. Okay, okay.
Sue will check that over, and then we'll bring that back. We can bring it back. We'll be meeting at our special meeting later this month. We can bring it back then. Okay, so Approval of Monthly Bills and Employee Recommendations. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, Business Services. And A is Business Services Committee Chair Report. Amy Daley.
That's me. All right, so we had a great meeting. I know it's hard to believe, but business services isn't necessarily a lot of excitement for some people. But we did have a great turnout. We filled our full one-hour time slot. We did have one action item, which was regarding the ropes course. We did have a lot of public comments in a presentation regarding the ropes course. And I do have to, just as a summary of all of the public comments, everybody from the alumni, teachers, community members, and current students who showed up to speak regarding it, were all in favor of us rebuilding and spoke very highly of the life lessons they learned from participating in that class. And so I'm going to move into my action item, which is the Spash Ropes Course Outdoor Classroom. This current ropes course has since been disassembled. It did not pass its inspection this year, and so we would need to hopefully approve tonight the rebuilding of this course so that our students who have enrolled in the adventure leadership-
Education.
Education class? I wrote it down. Would be able to participate in it yet this semester. And along with that, the new ropes course would be smaller, not losing any of the qualities that it currently had, but it would just be more compact and more efficient. We did have administration request bids. There's only four companies in the United States that do this, Texas, Maryland, Illinois, and Wisconsin. Wisconsin was the only one that returned a bid, probably because the other states looked at it and said, we can't send somebody there for what Wisconsin could do it for. And it just, students who came and spoke about how they had struggled in their education and in the social aspect- and in the social aspect of school, came and spoke about how the ropes course really changed their life and they felt welcome and they felt, they found a new ability to trust in people and just life skills that you can't necessarily learn in a classroom. And so I would move to approve the replacement of the High/Low Ropes Course in November of 2017. Oh, wait, before I do that. So they did actually, administration did say that, what they're going to look forward to doing is, in 30 years, we're probably going to have to replace this also. So they're going to look into charging a nominal fee for these outside groups that use the ropes course, stash that money away so then when it comes time to replace or repair the ropes course, we won't have to bring it back to the board to allocate money to do it. They'll already have saved up the money that would be necessary to make that repair or replacement. So with that, my original motion still stands.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mike. Discussion or questions for board members? Barb?
You knew this was coming. I think that the ropes course needs to be replaced. There's no doubt about that. Last year, we replaced the tennis courts at Benton at a substantial amount of money. Again, that needed to be done and they're gorgeous. But our playground equipment is needing to be funded by PTOs. And I still have a problem with that because secondary schools, they get their stuff that they need and the elementary schools. And let's face it, activity is part of their curriculum in the elementary schools. They have to play. So I will probably still vote for this, but I just want it, I wish that it had been prioritized with all of our other projects that we've got going on in the district.
In response to that, I think it had intention, they intended for it to be, but when it didn't pass inspection this year, it was the same situation that Roosevelt found themselves in. It doesn't pass inspection if we don't do something now, these students are going to lose out on that opportunity. And with the potential of now they don't have that opportunity anymore, what's the likelihood that it will be brought back at a later date? And so that's why it's come to this last-minute, "Let's get this in" situation.
So just a couple of comments. I think if you read through some of the letters of support and you weren't able to be here at the meeting, I think we, you know, as board members, we're not, in all the schools, we're not observing everything that students are using and that. But I think the people who came to spoke, to speak, especially the students who talked about not only the actual ropes, but what it added to their ability to communicate, to trust, very, very big. These letters speak about a lot of those things. And when you talked about what Tom mentioned, he also mentioned something that I think we're more and more thinking about in that being proactive in thinking. So we do this with charters, when there's a three-year or five-year program where we're going to receive money, then we have to figure out, once that money stops coming, after those grants come in, how are we going to maintain this? So I think one of the things that Tom talked about is, how do we become proactive in saying, "We really believe that this is beneficial to our students. What will we do in 10 years? How will we plan for in 10 years?" And I think that's one of the things he'll be looking at in a lot of the things, in the facilities that we're going to be looking, the capital improvement plan. A lot of those things, you know, you have to be proactive in a school district. You look at some of the things that we have in our buildings, you know, I always use this as an example, you have a restroom in your house that you have to eventually replace, maybe the plumbing or a toilet. Think about our schools, the ages that they are, how many times are those restrooms used per day, per month, per year? So I think that proactive idea of looking at, what are we going to give our students and how will we maintain that? We need to have plans for that. So I was very impressed that he talked about that. And I think funding possibly a nominal fee is an idea, not necessarily for sure, but coming up with a plan, I think, is a really good idea. So I absolutely will support this.
So I want to note to board members, and I want to thank Cory for coming up with the kind of how it was going to happen. And I want to thank Sue for going back and kind of redoing these. But if people can see on this, we now have and we will be having moving forward, any submission to us will identify the district pillar and it will identify the strategic objective that this is falling under. And the ropes course is fostering student engagement, growth, and learning. That's our pillar. The strategic objective is improve student engagement and achievement in an inclusive environment focused on literacy and the development of the whole child. And I guess I would just note from the presentations, from the letters, from the graduate who sent an amazing video to us from, I think he's out in New York, living, living a life that he really testified that he wouldn't have felt the ability to explore the world, except I'm not going to remember his exact tag phrase, but it was basically, "If you're afraid of it, do it," sort of thing. And that's what the ropes course fostered in him and many other students. So it was leadership, it was from the kid who was comfortable being up on the high wire and achieving that risk, and also the student that maybe wasn't comfortable with that, but was on the ground supporting that student. The concepts of team building, leadership, support, trust, encouragement, it was amazing. And I guess the other thing I want to note is, the cost is $81,164. Based on a projected 30 years of use, educating another 21,000 students through this outdoor classroom computes to a per-student cost of $3.86. And that's over a semester for these students. That's not just a one-time deal. The Director of Secondary Ed is allocating $25,000 from the district textbook account to help pay. SPASH is contributing $7,000. A Title IV grant is contributing $10,000. So we're talking about a balance of $39,164.
And it could be less than that.
And it could be less than that because we are already looking into supplying the poles that will form the underpinnings of it. As Amy noted, it's also going to be much more user and supervisory friendly because both the High Ropes Course and Low Ropes Course are going to be on the same footprint, basically. So they're all going to be in the same location, allowing those supervisors to be able to watch everyone within the same location. And then my final comment is, I think first and foremost, when we vote on a project like this, it's important for us to believe in it from an educational, student development perspective. And if we believe in it, then we should be willing to invest the funds. I think it's important for us as a district to take that look at how, whether, what we should be doing in terms of charging fees. But at the end of the day, our public buildings and our playgrounds and our ropes courses with supervision are public resources for our community. And one of the other things, Tom talked about it, that Business Services Committee, is us as a district moving forward to really on a more proactive way, being able to provide services for community members with the assets that we as a district have. So I really hope we can take a look more from that broad look as to what our resources, how can we support not only our students, but our parents within this community and our families and our businesses? And where is that balance between allowing that use by the people who actually, at the end of the day, pay for it? And making sure that we have the funds within our district to be able to support the maintenance and the replacement when it needs to happen? So administration has agreed to take that task on in a much broader way than just this ropes course. But it's that concept of all of our facilities, from the Boston School Forest, to our ropes course, to our, the Professional Development Center. So thank you to Tom for, who's sitting out there, to really taking a much broader look at this, it's a really big issue.
I feel compelled just to make a couple of comments. First of all, nobody likes surprises. And I'm a firm believer that we need to have all of our expenses go through a regular budget cycle. That said, this was a surprise. We've got a lot of new people in the school district. We didn't know this was even an issue till the summer. And quite frankly, it's a very significant outdoor classroom space and I'm very supportive of following through with this. And Barb, I can't disagree with the words you said. You know, it is what it is right now, yet this is something I believe that we need to move forward with. Knowing that we had our good friends from Findorf right across the street doing some work with Sundry Insurance. I've got a gentleman that I know that's working in that project, assisted us in taking all of that stuff down, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Thanks go out to those good people.
Okay, any...
Just want to, the balance, the $39,000, where is that coming from?
That's going to be built into the budget.
Okay, so general...
Well, it's going to come out of the general budget, but when we get into the finances, you know, we've been running a deficit budget for the last couple of years. So, you know, really at the end of the day, when you're running a deficit budget and you add something to it, it's a fund balance issue at the end of the day. You know, we had talked about that last week. We were expecting a $700,000 deficit and when the books were closed, I believe it was $200,000. So it'll get built into the budget.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post?
All right, so then we have the Energy Exemption Act 32. This is information-only item, and I'll just do a brief summary and then hand it over to Superintendent Gerlach and Dr. Owens. So in September, the governor vetoed the energy efficiency revenue limit adjustment. And so his idea, the governor has, is that expiring on 12/31/17, which means that you would have to have your board approve any of these projects that would fall under the energy exemption before that date. So we may be in a bit of a crunch and that's what I have to say, Superintendent Gerlach.
If I could have Dr. Owens come on up here, please. We had brought this up at our committee meeting last week, as Amy had just explained. In the new budget, Act 32 is going to disappear. It's going to disappear as it's written for the next 1,000 years, which I think will be challenged and that likely will be changed. That said, we have been involved with Act 32 Energy Exemption projects in the Stevens Point area public schools for many years. We're interested, Tom and I, continuing the last opportunity that we will have to implement such a project. You're well aware that we've been working with NEXUS over the past year. NEXUS is, was heavily involved with creating this particular legislation. Will likely be advocating and lobbying to have that 1,000 years changed in the next biennial budget. That's neither here nor there. If we don't take advantage of that exemption this year, we won't be able to, in the unforeseen future, take advantage of that. It is a funding mechanism that we have used for many years in our district. We're interested in continuing that. That said, you know, I want to be cautious that we don't, aren't forced to do something because the governor changed the rules, so to speak. We do, however, have a number of months till the end of December to complete a project if we're interested. We believe that we're on time to do so, in that we have shovel-ready projects. NEXUS is completing, and quite frankly, their study is complete. Tom and I have been working with NEXUS over the last couple of months, trying to prepare it and get it ready to present to the school board as it relates to all of the projects, whether it's a Level 1, Level 2, or Priority 1, 2, or 3. We have identified Priorities 1, 2, and 3. We're focusing on right now Priority 1s. This is the preventative maintenance projects that would be eligible for an energy exemption status. We're also looking at improving our educational facilities, our classroom space. That's a separate study. That particular study is close to being complete. We likely will be bringing all of this forward to the board in December, maybe January, and we'll have a special board meeting as we roll out all of these issues. That said, we'd like to have discussion and have board consideration to continue the opportunity of funding through the energy exemption, and we're suggesting a level that we currently have built in our budget. We have, in our budget, the last, certainly last year, the last couple of years, approximately $1.5 million we've been spending on energy exemption projects. If we were to utilize this and bond out for 20 years, we likely would come close to $25 million of projects that we could support through this last Act 32 project, at the same time maintaining our current spending within the budget. Trying to come out with a process that makes sense, something that's obviously very upfront for everyone, because we could, we could take the entire NEXUS program as it relates to being energy exempt. That's going to be relatively sizable and I think we're going to get an awful lot of questions on that. Therefore, we're stepping back and saying what makes sense. And I think what makes sense for us is to continue our current level of spending. Now granted, that $1.5 million, if we don't, that drops off our budget, Tom, correct?
Yes.
You know, so there is that savings if we don't do it, but if we do it, we're maintaining that current level. We're not prepared to bring those, what we are prepared to do is come at our special meeting on October 23rd, is it?
If I can just...
Please.
There's a process we have to follow, a formal process because of the statutes. So the first thing we need to do is bring in a resolution. It's an initiating resolution, if you will, and sets a maximum cap of the amount of money that you're looking at bonding for this purpose. That would occur at the next board meeting. That's not necessarily the amount that we'll settle on. We could settle on that amount or a number less, but we've got to determine what that cap is. You would pass that resolution at the next board meeting. I would then, the next day, put that, well, I'd send it to the newspaper as soon as they publish it, then that starts a window, a 30-day window for consideration. And then on the board meeting of the December 11th, we would return with the actual documentation that is needed. that is needed.[501.11]